I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Consider our motion to approve our agenda?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to our consent agenda. Consider our motion.
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We call the roll, Sean.
Commissioner Aaronson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to come on up, now would be the time to do so. All right. If not, move on to Commissioner reports. Any Commissioners have reports they'd like to make today?
I would, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I did meet with Lenox City Administrator Nathan Vander Plaats last Friday, Friday, in regard to, you know, water and sewer, a hookup at the Lincoln County 4-H grounds, in addition to what we currently have. He showed me three possible routes that could be used for the hookup for the 4-H grounds, and he was going to contact Stockwell Engineering and get a cost estimate for each one. He was going to try to report that back to myself and Commissioner Schmidt. I know that there is one route that would be much more, require much more work and more expensive and more with a lift station than the other two, so obviously we'd be looking at those three things, and I look forward for him to get back to me on that. I know that this is something that we want to try to get done. I know that we're kind of behind the eight ball here a little bit, but we'll see what progress we can do. I also wanted to report that I was in contact with the new owner of the bank across the street. I believe it is Great Western Bank. And he expressed to me that he had purchased the bank and that right now for the somewhat immediate future, and perhaps even longer, he might be looking at leasing out that building, and wanted to know if Lincoln County had some type of an interest in a lease. I guess this is something that maybe we'll have to have a discussion about some sort. But anyway, I just felt that sometime I do need to get back to him if there is an interest there or not.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Good morning. I had Todd Gannon call me as well. He called me on Thursday or Friday, and he expressed an interest in wanting to lease the bank building to the county. He said that it's still available and would be open to entertaining any kind of lease situation, long-term lease, remodeling. He said it was all on the table. And he said that he preferred a long-term lease, actually. So the building is still available, even though it may not be for sale, and I guess I just second what Commissioner Gibbon said, given that Todd Gannon called me. And also additionally, I spoke, had the Harrisburg School Superintendent Tim Graff contacted me. He contacted me about the new school that went up on Louise Avenue. And what he and I talked about is that there was a turning lane installed there about a year and a half ago. And that turning lane was the, I guess, at issue with regard to who was going to help pay for it, given that it comes off a county road. So Superintendent of the Harrisburg School is going to be coming at us, wanting to collect from the county with regard to installing that turning road. And apparently, there's been some discussions with Terry Floyd and all of that. But Mr. Graff asked to be on the agenda for the next meeting, and I told him I would facilitate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. If not, we'll move on to regular business. First item on the agenda, Sheriff.
Morning.
Good morning.
Steve Swenson, Leica County Sheriff. I'm here to discuss the FOP contract or pay increase that was voted down last week and urge the Commission to address the pay discrepancy with our deputies, as well as a pay increase for all employees other than our deputies. So I brought some data in, and I just did some quick math. Sioux Falls is, or Minnion County is advertising on Facebook, hiring range 2665 to 2943 an hour, with a full earning potential of 3861, compared to Lincoln County is 2328, starting. 2569 would be a step five, which is the range that we would have to hire with a total earning potential of 3131. Starting wage, we are behind the Minnion County Sheriff's Office today at 15%. We're behind the Sioux Falls Police Department by 19%. That's starting wage. Then if you hire certified, we're at 15, we're 15% behind Minnion County. Our top end range, the 31 compared to 38, we're 23% behind there, which affects, we just have two or three deputies that fall in the maximum range. Our sergeants are currently 20% behind the Minnion County Sheriff's Office, and 22% behind the sergeant on the Sioux Falls PD. Our command staff is 25% behind the Minnion County SO, and 32% behind the Sioux Falls PD. And it's just as simple as this. That's who we compete against. So if Lincoln County has come to a point, and we've done pretty well up to this point, until, in lieu of what all these other departments are doing with COVID-type money to get their pay up. So this big swing that we were in, that we're way behind, is pretty recent. But not to address it, I think was a huge mistake last week. I did some, another, and I'm not going to show his name here. We have a deputy that currently has the family health insurance. His current salary is 2709, five hours of overtime at 3951. His net take-home pay, after paying $421.66 bi-weekly for health insurance, his net income is $15.16 an hour. I think these numbers speak for themselves, and I would urge the Commission to consider at least the same pay increase the rest of the county employees got.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Sheriff?
Steve, I got a couple of questions in terms of turnover rate. How many deputies, or first of all, I saw the briefing packet. It says on patrol, we have 18 deputies and four part-time.
Correct.
But in terms of the, and I think this discussion is not only for us, but for the broader public. How many total deputies do you have on staff?
Put me on the spot here. This includes jail deputies as well, and all sworn is 25.
Well, yeah, and I want to make sure I'm talking apples to apples as well. Maybe I should restate that and ask you, how many deputies are subject to the FOP contract?
22.
Okay. And that would be both full-time and part-time?
Only full-time.
Okay. And those 22, the 18 would be subject to the FOP contract, or the 22?
The 22.
Okay. So there's 22 full-time deputies. And then, in terms of our current calendar year, just in terms of understanding the level of competition with Minnion County and SFPD, how many deputies have left us in the last calendar year, since January 1st?
We've lost one, and we will be, and one has resigned since these, this pay information started coming out.
Yeah, so I saw in today's consent agenda, we accepted the resignation of Austin Rhodes. So technically, there would be two for this calendar year, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, in 2021, how many losses did we have from FOP membership in 2021, if you know?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a handle on what the turnover rate is, to understand what the level of, you know, how mission-critical this is. So we've lost two in the last six months, and, I mean, is it safe to say we probably lost at least one in 2021?
Sergeant Barter, do you know?
Okay. And then, okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My question, Steve, if all of these number rates in regard to hourly wages and so forth, did I take it off in the Sioux Falls website, or where did you get this data?
Yes, I actually went through the Minnion County, well, this data here came off Minnion County's Facebook. I also pulled up, went meeting by meeting, to find a sergeant pay, and they, they have captains, we have lieutenants. And then, the Sioux Falls salaries are on Sioux Falls, just under Sioux Falls wages on Google, quite frankly.
I looked back since January 1st, and it seemed like there was approximately 20 items on our consent agenda, our regular business, where you had requested additional pay for individuals, either a step increase or something of that nature, where a new hire, so on and so forth. Does that sound correct?
Well, every year, we'll have 30, or at least 30 people that are going to make the agenda for a step.
And I realize people leave, and new hire, but I know, you know, just a few weeks ago, you wanted two new people, and we granted, and we granted you an over-hire, too, at that particular time.
Right, it was a, it was two-person over-hire, one additional person. But when you're talking about asking for pay raises, the only pay raises that are given are what the county gives, and the consent agenda, those are just people that are getting their step raises. They're going to, they're going to be on the agenda annually, every single one of them.
But their pay is an advancement, correct, with years of experience, and also if they're moved up to a lieutenant and so forth, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But I mean, the point I'm making is that you've asked for these things, and as a Commission, I don't believe we've ever denied you any of that at this particular time for this year.
No.
Thank you.
Steve, additional question, and I think this goes to the larger issue, the trajectory of the department. I agree with you. Minnion County is a market leader. They're a tough competitor. They just got the money, right? They have 200,000.
Madam Chair.
Just a moment. Commissioner Aaronson has the floor.
They got 200,000 residents, they got property tax valuation, they've got the cash. We've got 68,000 people, we've got a lower valuation. But, so there's disparities between our resources and theirs, but at the same time, they're definitely a market competitor. Do you foresee indexing off of them going forward in the future? Or do you just, I guess that's my first question. Or the second part of the question is, is it just because we're in this volatile economy with the inflation? I think I heard on the news last night, inflation is the highest it's ever been since 1981. That's just a real hidden tax that everybody faces in the economy. So are you thinking you want to get equal with Minnion County, or at least index off them? Or is the big swing that you're talking about more maybe a factor of the economy and everything that's going on with that right now?
No, I think the, I think it's fair we need to gauge off of Minnion County. This was a, a good analogy was, when somebody knocks on your door in southern Lincoln County, do you want the same quality that knocks on your door in the city of Sioux Falls? I think the answer is yes, and we currently have that. However, with some of the things, the quotes that have been made in the media and the pay discrepancy, we're going to, we're going to lose that. Because they, I mean, the discrepancy is so huge, and the majority of our staff live in the city of Sioux Falls. They pay the same property tax, they pay the same mortgages, they pay the same for the price of gas. Do we have to meet or match Minnion County? No, but we do have to be competitive. And when we're 30 and 22% behind, and this just, this just happened this year. We, as Commissioner Gibbon stated, the Commission's been very supportive of the department. But this big swing in the last six months, people are going to start looking elsewhere when they're, when they're making $15 an hour, working for Lincoln County, and they could be making $38 an hour, or drop their insurance off there, make it $25 an hour. That's a lot of money, $20,000 a year. You're just going to, you're going to apply there first, and then we'll get the, we'll get the applicants that didn't get hired there.
So in terms of the game plan, in terms of being able to get there, to become competitive with Minnion County, if you did 9.25 today, I think that equates into about, is it, it's just over two bucks an hour raise, right? At the starting, for the person who makes 23, deputy who starts out at $23 an hour, right?
Yep, roughly.
And we basically got a $3 discrepancy between us and Minnion County. Is it possible where we could achieve some kind of parity, some kind of parity with Minnion County over the course of the next, I guess it would be six months? So here's what I mean by that. Right now, today, if you gave a 6% increase, that's about a buck 50 an hour. And that would start today, and it would go till the beginning of the next budget year. Then, if at the beginning of the next budget year, you gave another 6% increase, that would be another buck 50. That would close the gap within the next six months, if my math is right. I'm just doing round numbers here, kind of. But we'd be able to close that gap and actually have parity. Now, I'm just gauging the numbers based off the starting salary for a deputy, of course. I know that there's differences, there's a lot of different pay grades in there that we'd have to work with. But that would also leave us 3.25% available to pay for your, pay for the additional deputies you've asked for, in terms of those new FTEs, right? Because we're going to have to pay for those on top of the people we already have. Is that, is that a manageable, responsible way, in your opinion, to get there?
Well, if we go with my opinion, I think, my opinion is that they should get equal to the rest of the county employees.
Yeah, there's no reason we can't close the gap now. We don't need to wait six months. Commissioner Schmidt?
The other issue you can run into is, Minnion County is also, and don't quote me on this, but it's either a 10% raise at the beginning of next year. So there's, if we, we will be falling short this year, and falling short next year. And honestly, if it came down, right down to it, I'd rather take care of the people we have than add people at the expense of, on the backs of the deputies that are currently working on the road.
Steve, what was the, what was the percentage you said? I mean, is it, is it 15% on average? Or are you asking for a percentage across the board increase?
All I'm saying is, we are currently, we're 15% behind Minnion County today from starting step one to step five.
And that's for patrol?
For patrol. Sergeants are 23, I'm going to wait, that's, sergeants are 20% behind. I'm not asking for anything specific, other than, no less than the rest of the county employees received. Addressing what we're going to do next year to at least stay competitive. Again, I understand they're a bigger department, there's more people, but we are patrolling the same people. The job is just as dangerous, if not more dangerous, because we have less people. So I, I'm not asking to make it equal, I'm asking to make it fair. What happened last week was not fair. It was insulting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Schmidt.
If I may?
Go ahead.
To our sheriff and to our deputies, I'm one Commissioner that would like to apologize for this situation having even occurred. I don't think there's any question that we value the public safety that our Sheriff's Department applies, supplies for the citizens of Lincoln County. And this unfortunate situation became, probably, I'm on a vote. I'll take full responsibility for my vote. If I could withdraw that, I would do it in a heartbeat. I listened interesting this morning on all of your points, and I agree with our sheriff. The intent of that 10% increase was for all employees across the board, anybody that works for Lincoln County. I don't think there's any question to the fact that our salary schedules are lower than that of our neighbors to the north. And we are in competition with our neighbors to the north, because the majority of our individuals, or at least an equal number, live in the city of Sioux Falls, or T, or Harrisburg, and they have all of these situations. So we can't isolate ourselves in saying that, well, our pay schedule is above that of some other area. We're in competition because we are a county that shares Sioux Falls, and in competition with the pay of Sioux Falls, we have to come to the idea that that is real. So, Madam Chair, I'm ready for a motion to bring back and to say that I want to extend that 10% increase to include all of the members of our Lincoln County, including the Sheriff's Department as well. And I don't know if that's a timely one, but I think it's time we get this thing taken care of, and I move on that, and that would be my motion, if there would be a second.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second a motion for discussion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Sheriff. A couple of quick questions. Well, first, I'm going to state it is, I don't apologize for voting no, because today, we're getting the well-deserved discussion on this issue that it should have had last week. I appreciate you coming up and enlightening all of us as to what's going on in your office. Couple of quick questions. Our deputies, do they require any less training, or require any more skills or duties than the counterparts in Minnion County?
No.
You know, we talk about being, you know, within a certain range of Minnion County. It's more difficult to recruit individuals that are already living in Sioux Falls or somewhere else to come here. So for us to even think about that we're going to be less in a salary, that's, that just stymies your ability to fully staff your department. I understand that. The other issue that I have is, if we don't facilitate being able to recruit, and currently, quickly, how many are we advertising for now?
We just finished the hiring process for three, and potentially, we'll hire two that are in the background.
And we have a contract that will expand services proposed for Harrisburg?
Correct.
And how many more deputies will we need for that?
I think with the additional two that I'm asking for next year, would, will cover that.
If we don't have this adjustment today, let alone an additional services, do you fully believe that we'll be able to staff our department to a point where we can fully exercise that contract? Or does it at least put it at risk?
It would definitely put it at risk if we cannot maintain staffing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I hope that we, in light of the discussion we've had, we give full support to this motion and move on, and understanding that there needs to be additional funding coming in our, in our budget for next year, because we've always been behind by a couple percentage points. We're behind currently by 15%, and there, and that will grow if we don't continue to make adjustments.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if our motion shouldn't be 15%. That would truly make us more competitive and show our deputies that we do care about them and that they're as important to us as the deputies in Minnion County are to their commission. That's my two cents on that.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I don't disagree with you much. I think that what we have started is the situation, which was well-intended to provide 10%, and then address that in our budget. I don't disagree with your logic on the 15%, but then you would have a seesaw battle between, or you potentially could have, with other departments. I think the sheriff has a good point of being fair on a 10% across the board right now, and as we address in our budget, the equity that we need to come up with as far as compensation for some of our critical roles in the county.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have on the agenda, this is open for public input, so I'm not going to call a vote at this time, but open it up for any public discussion. Invite anybody to come up, limit your time to three minutes. If you have somebody that wants to speak for the group, that would be fine as well.
I did have a comment, Madam Chair, sometime.
Chad, you want to come up?
Good morning, Commission.
Good morning.
Chad Skiles, 820 North Dakota Street, Canton, South Dakota. I wanted to just relate a little story. February 13th, 2015, does anyone remember where you were at on that day? I do. I'll never forget that day. I was at work, working an ambulance shift in Lennox. And my morning started out like any other morning, and then I got a call, received a call, shooting. Sue steel, multiple patients. I responded to the call, and we had to stand by for law enforcement, per our policy. But when the point came down that it was time for us to go in and take care of those injured patients, we didn't know where the shooter was yet. But we were able to go in and start treatment on our patients because of law enforcement officers. I don't wear a law enforcement badge, but I do wear an EMS badge. And that puts me in the same brotherhood as my brothers and sisters in law enforcement. Because what they did on February 13th, 2015, went above and beyond what they had to do. As I was knelt down trying to save a shooting victim's life, I had a Lennox police officer, a South Dakota Highway Patrolman, and two Lincoln County Sheriff's deputies, standing around me and my partner, keeping us safe, so that I could do my job. around me and my partner, keeping us safe so that I could do my job. I will never forget that. I can never repay those law enforcement officers for what they did that day, because I was able to do my job. All I'm asking of the Commission this morning is to please take that into consideration when you think about what these men and women do every day. As I was putting this together in my head yesterday, what broke on TV? Another shooting. Please, please do what's right. There was morale damage done last week in this very room. We need to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and speak?
We mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. The primary happened for three of you last week. Congratulations, now you are governing. I am hoping that what happened last week should never have happened, but I agree with, um, Commissioner Poppins, this discussion needed to come up. This should never, ever have been a one to four vote. This should have been unanimous from day one. It should never be a discussion. It should never be three to two. It should be unanimous for these people that put their lives on the line every single day for us, every single day. And they do it not because they're forced to, but because they give their lives. And many of them, I believe three of them, at least three, if I'm not mistaken, are past, are, are either current or past military, if not four. So not only are you disrespecting the people that are sitting in this office representing law enforcement, you're disrespecting the military by not voting five to zero for this. And I agree with Chairman Landin, it should be 15%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up? If not, we've got a motion. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gibbon, you wanted to say something?
Well, I can just tell you, as a former school administrator, you, you're never going to be able to totally, um, compete with Sioux Falls or Minnehaha County and so forth and so forth wage-wise. It's just very, very difficult. They will always stay ahead of you to some degree. And I know, uh, part of the things that you had to do is to make things more attractive and the other issues that, that you could provide for your staff and so forth. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that it's, it would be very different called year in and year out to compete with them, because obviously their numbers and their more tax base and so forth, but I just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Sheriff, uh, when you were talking to Commissioner Poppins...
Can you speak into your mic, please?
Yeah, I gotta turn it on, thank you. You said that you're hiring two new deputies. Is that to fill the two new slots that we approved last month?
No, it'd be one vacant and then one, one additional spot. However, we do have a deputy resigning, so it will be just to fill the two vacancies.
Okay, so the two new slot, two new positions that we approved last month, those haven't been filled at all yet?
No, and we'll, actually, we'll have to start the hiring process over, because we, we received, I believe it was eight applications for those three positions, for certified. We only advertised for certified, so.
Okay. And then, uh, we didn't advertise for new people who would have to go to the academy?
No.
Okay. Uh, does that limit our hiring, hiring pool?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, you were asked a question by Commissioner Poppins about the new contract with Harrisburg. I, for some reason, was under the impression we didn't have to do any new hires in order to fulfill the contract. Is that wrong?
That, that would be wrong.
Okay.
But the, and, and the contract's up for discussion later in the meeting, so this is, won't be a secret. We've been, we are increasing the, the contract from roughly 428,000 to 900,000. The city of Harrisburg has just simply outgrown the hourly 24 hours a day. We, we are currently covering it more than that, so we're just getting it up to, and this will just, this contract will be all-inclusive. It will cover the school resource officer, uh, and 24 hours of police coverage, whatever that takes. So, so a city of 7,000 people should probably have three or four officers on at a time. We're currently doing it with one. Uh, next year, I anticipate that to be, uh, two and a half to three, um, because we have the support of the deputies that are working in the county, is why that works. Um, but that, the half a million dollar increase covers the four employees that I was, that I, that I have on my budget for next year, which you've already approved two of those this year, so it'd be additional two for next year. But that, that was the, is, what I've pitched to the city of Harrisburg is we're going to add some more deputies, uh, to cover this, because it's just going to require more coverage. It, it requires that coverage now.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I have an alternate motion to make. I would amend the Commissioner Schmidt's motion. And my motion would be to, uh, increase the pay above and beyond the FOP wages by 6% for the remainder of this calendar year.
Well, I'm gonna, I think we're gonna vote?
No, you can accept a second, or you need a second for the amendment.
Well, is there a second for the amendment?
I didn't understand what the motion was.
My motion, Commissioner Gibbon, is to increase the wages, or to amend Commissioner Schmidt's motion to, instead of doing 10%, to do 6% for all the FOP employees for the remainder of this calendar year.
Okay, I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Um, are there, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'll try to keep it brief, thank you. Commissioner Gibbon, Commissioner Herons, I appreciate your comments and discussion today. It definitely shows there is support, and now we're talking about the numbers of what is appropriate with our budget. We just entered into our general budget, um, the ARPA funds that will cover expenditures such as this that need to be adjusted because of significant changes that have happened since we did this budget, um, a little over a year ago. I can agree with Commissioner Schmidt that I would like to, and Commissioner Landin, that I would like to go ahead and do 15% today, because it is warranted based on the statistical data that says that we're behind. What I want to encourage the board is to be prepared, though, when it comes to our budget time. We have, over the years, I've been on this board on and off, off some, uh, since 2002. We've had the luxury of being able to say, we don't have to be at the same salary or a price or wages as our counterparts to the north, or competitive wherever it would be. We're not that same county from back in '02, we're definitely not the same county in the 80s. We're the same. Our, the people need the same skill sets, they need the same training, level of competency. There is no expectation that we should be able to hire the same person for less money. So moving into our next budget, I would, I would hope us that we understand that, uh, because otherwise, we're simply going to always be trying to pick up, you know, thing, personnel that maybe isn't as good. No offense to our current staff, and that's why I'm supporting that we maintain these people now, because we have a great staff. But I'm very concerned that we lose them, because there are huge differential, not just in the sheriff's department, in all departments. And that is why that, uh, at, at a minimum, we need to pass this at the full 10%. So I will not be supporting the amendment, because I do think it's imperative that we stay on target to get caught up as much as, and as quickly as we possibly can. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would agree with those statements. Commissioner Schmidt, you understand there's a motion, um, an alternative motion that was made?
Yes, I do.
Any comments about that?
I'm waiting all the question on it.
Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to speak in favor of my motion before the question is called.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so just, I'll explain the rationale behind, uh, the reason why I offered 6%. Uh, first and foremost, I don't think there's, uh, any dispute that we appreciate the work of our law enforcement. That's number one. Number two, uh, I disagreed and voted against the 10% increase for the rest of the employees. Commissioner Schmidt and I had a conversation, uh, two weeks ago. I told him that, uh, 6% was my number back then, so he was well aware of that, and he and I had a good discussion about it. Obviously, the, uh, 10% raise was passed for the rest of the county employees, but I think I'm, if our lodestar here today is fairness with the other employees, what I would have suggested at that time was 6%. Yes, I, uh, do feel bad that an alternative motion wasn't made at that time, but now is the time to, uh, rectify that. Commissioner Poppins, I, uh, I agree with some of your comments. We're not the same county as the 1980s. We do have a great staff, we do appreciate them. I'm concerned about other areas of the budget, though, because when you take money to give it to one department, you're, you are taking it away from other departments. For example, we got road and bridge issues that we're going to have to deal with, and we're going to need, uh, financing from the county to be able to take care of those issues as well. So I'm for a conservative, balanced approach. Uh, I understand that, uh, not doing 9.25 doesn't give us the kind of parity with Minnehaha County, but, uh, just as we're not the same county as, uh, we were in the 1980s, we also don't have the same financial resources as our market competitor. We just don't have the same amount of money that, that they do. And if we overload in one area, we're going to underload in another area. And so I understand that we've got market competition forces at work here, and I appreciate that. But I also want to say one other thing. I served in uniform, I wore a bulletproof vest, worked for 18 months. I took hostile fire, I returned hostile fire. I was hurt in an IED accident. I spent four months in and out of the VA when I got back from Iraq. I went there twice. I understand what it's like to put my life on the line in defense of others, and so I appreciate the work that these deputies do. But I don't want my more conservative approach to budgeting to be confused with lack of support. I have a different approach financially, uh, when it comes to these issues. And, uh, so the other concern that I have is using one-time monies, ARP funds, to support ongoing salaries. That's another concern that I have. Uh, because at some point in time, that money will run out, and then we'll have to figure out another way to sustain our operations. So I think part of supporting law enforcement also means we've got to come up with a sustainable way of, uh, budgeting as well. So that's what goes into, uh, that's what goes into my approach here. Thank you.
Got a motion to amend. Go ahead and call the question.
This is a motion to amend to 6% for FOP for the duration of 2022, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Herons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landin?
We have, uh...
Madam Chair, call the original question.
Yes, that's, I'm, I'm getting to it, Commissioner. We have the original motion on the table, which was to amend, uh, the FOP wages by 10%. Sean? Oh, go ahead.
Are you limiting your call question?
I was going to call a question. Do you have something to say?
I would like, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Commissioner Herons, I don't disagree with you, uh, you know, when it comes to conservative budget. For the public's understanding, uh, how our budgets have gotten set over the years, uh, we have been, with leadership, a very conservative county. Uh, they have, uh, done their very best not to burden the taxpayers any more than they deem fit. Same time, when that was set up, or that system was set up, that is not the county we have today. And I don't want, I'm not hiding from the fact that we are going to have to be, um, dynamic as well, uh, as trying to figure out how to provide the services. So that, you're exactly right. We, we will be taking, unless we find additional funding, um, by some other means to, to pay for some of these services down the road. We applied the, uh, approximately $10 million into our general fund to cover these costs for a couple of years, uh, which gets us through, which would give this board and whatever board is, is going to be seating here over the years, optimum, optimum time to try to figure that out. And maybe the state legislator will come through finally and, and give us some, uh, discretion that we don't currently have as far as funding. But we need that, we need this opportunity today, we need those funds today to be able to retain the individuals, um, that we need, desperately need. But I don't disagree that, that our predecessors, this board has been extremely conservative, no opt-outs as of today. We've had small bond issues to pay for this addition, a highway shop, uh, over those years. I don't think that any board that has sat here in the, in the years that I've been here, or even before me, has, has spent money foolishly. I don't believe this board is spending money foolishly, um, and I, I'm proud of that. But the same token is, is we are looking at a future where dynamic, we're growing 65,000 and, and projected to continue to do so. I've looked at this budget for way too many years. With the current form that we generate revenue through property taxes on the burden of the taxpayers of this county, fine county, there's going to have to be something that changed. Hopefully, the state legislature allows us the discretion and additional funding, but if it isn't, it's still going to come back to the taxpayers of the county, and if we don't choose to, um, increase that, we'll have to be open and forthright to the taxpayers as to how we make those adjustments. Over the years, we've continuously come to the highway department's budget and remove projects, because we need to keep the cash applied in an appropriate level to, to make the budget hap, uh, uh, look appropriate. And I think anybody that drives on our county roads now is seeing those efforts come to fruition as, as our roads have started to deteriorate rapidly. And so we can no longer continue to do this. This is a tough decision, but it is up to this board to make those decisions as to what the future will be in the, um, not just next year, but for the next five, 10, 20 years. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I think I made the statement last week, it's very difficult for this county to give a stimulus, a pay increase, and also an increase in health insurance. And I think the sheriff made it very plain, one of his deputies, what it's costing in health insurance. And I particularly last week voted no, because I felt the health insurance issue should have been addressed before the stimulus. I do think 10% is a reasonable raise, but this health insurance is something that needs to be addressed as well. I question if we're going to have the money to do so if we, uh, continue at these particular rates of increase of, uh, right now for everyone, but nonetheless, uh, I guess that's something that we'll also have to look at.
Thank you. Sean, will you go ahead and call? Sean, will you go ahead and call the question?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Schmidt?
Well, we're going to get to a vote. I was wondering if we're going to tackle the budget. We wondered pretty much, and all had good, been good points, I understand. But so the public knows, this is just to follow through so that our employees are compensated at a 10% rate, all employees, and to address the situation that unfortunately and should never have occurred last week. I like the testimony from our public. I think they were well timed and well received. And please, call the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Call the question.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
I'll go yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
I'm voting yes, and it's not a difficult decision for me, and I want you all to know that. Thank you. Motion carries. Move on to item two on our agenda?
This is the second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending chapter 154 zoning, sections 154.021, 154.057 sub 8, 154.117 sub E, 154.137 sub F, 154.137 sub G, 154.137 sub H, and the addition of section 154.137 sub I for cannabis establishments. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero.
Good morning, Commissioners. Toby Brown with County Planning. As I stated in the briefing memo, last year, the Board of Commissioners adopted temporary zoning controls for medical cannabis facilities or establishments. Temporary controls under the state codified laws are in place for a year, can be extended for a year, or can be adopted permanently. What the planning commission's recommend at this time is that you enact these regulations permanently, so the ordinance before you would place these regulations fully into the zoning ordinance. As is shown in the draft that's presented to you, there is some changes to what was adopted a year ago. Primarily, those changes are because after the temporary zoning controls were established, the county adopted a licensing ordinance. That licensing ordinance included a number of things that we already had in the, in the zone, in the temporary zoning control. So really, to eliminate bureaucracy and duplication of it, staff recommended that these be removed. It won't make anything that the board has approved nonconforming. As you recall, I believe the county has issued four licenses in the county at this time. The planning and zoning offices issued two building permits for facilities that have been approved for licensing. And so these controls are fully in compliance with state statute and with your adopted, or your adopted licensing ordinance. So with that, if you have any questions that you have for staff at this time?
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Has, Belle, have you looked at this? I mean, is this consistent with...
I have discussed with... Yes, I think it's consistent, but we didn't do that.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this ordinance amendment? Anyone here to speak on it at all, besides Toby? All right. If not, I'd consider a motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by, a second by Commissioner Gibbon. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item three on our agenda. Was the sheriff going to speak to the reclassification?
Yeah, I think he just asked.
All right. Well, we'll skip over that one for now, then, as well as item four, and move on to item five. Good morning, Wendy.
Good morning. Just giving you my second quarterly report. That was, should have been attached to the agenda, but our grounds progress is our, Cleary was our building contractor for the show ring building, and they began on that April 18th. It blew down May 12th, and they were out again on site May 15th, beginning to clear it and had new footings poured by May 20th, so they worked fairly quickly. They had the building constructed by June 14th. Chad, Todd, and Talon Hazel came in June 18th and hauled in six dump loads of, side dump loads of dirt into the building to level that ground off in there. The horse arena panels were delivered May 26th, and the fence was constructed the week of June 13th. Precision Dirt Works delivered and leveled the sand on June 21st, so we were able to hold our first county 4H horse show in the new arena on June 23rd. Thanks to John Rambo and the Highway Department for moving the bleachers and the blue hog gates from Canton to Lenox last week, we were able to use those bleachers at our tractor pole event we had on Sunday. We also planted flowers that were donated by Flowers by Bob in planter boxes that they had also donated to spruce up the grounds. We had our last YQCA training June 1st. We had 32 youth from Lincoln County, Union, Minnehaha, and Moody Counties as well. We held a canning and bread baking workshop in Harrisburg on June 22nd. Thanks to grants from the Lenox Area Community Fund and the T-Area Community Foundation, we were able to provide supplies for 17 4Hers to make their own jam and bread and bring home their own canning starter kit, canning book, a loaf of bread and jam that they also made. So we had our last consumer decision making and horticulture skeleton contest, June 29th in Lenox, and we had 20 members from Lincoln, Union, and Minnehaha Counties participate. As for me, I attended the 4H Spring Conference in Yankton, May 10th and 12th, went to the livestock industry trust meeting in Pier on June 9th, judge speeches at the National Horse Team Convention, June 28th, and Chris, our intern, led storytime at the Canton Library, June 21st and 22nd. We had eight more people test for commercial pesticide applicator training in this quarter for a total of 16 this winter, and that has since ceased as we go into our summertime, and we'll pick that up again this fall. You can see our facility usage for April to June was pretty busy, and will be busy again July through August. I will update you with the, foundation had a tractor pole event on Sunday at the grounds. We had about 400 adults and 100 children present. We had 111 hooks. Total profit is still being tabulated, but we had a lot of people that had never been to the grounds before that were exposed to the facility, and a lot of people excited for future tractor pole events in the future, so.
Anybody have any questions for Wendy?
Does, does the extension, do you do CPR training to the students?
We haven't, but we can. A lot of times when 4H extension people do CPR training is through like a babysitting clinic, and we just haven't offered that yet.
Because I can recall contacting someone through our extension, and they did so through South Dakota State, and they came actually to school, and after school, anybody who wanted to go could get CPR training. We had a lot of fifth graders and fourth graders that took it.
That's something I could host but not be a trainer on, so.
Thanks, Wendy.
Did you want to run through Wendy's budget real quick?
Oh, sure.
So she doesn't need to wait through the rest of the meeting?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, so her budget is going to be on page 38.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, or Madam Auditor, what did you say? What page?
Page 38.
Thank you.
Go ahead whenever you're ready, Wendy.
I will say that I have no changes from last year's budget. I guess if you have questions on some of the amounts or anything, you can sure ask, but it's all the same as last year.
Anybody have any questions for Wendy about the budget? If not, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Morning, Terry.
Good morning. I'm here today looking to declare a speed reduction on County Road 106, 271th Street. We're going to be looking to lower it from about Tall Grass Avenue, 471st Avenue, over to Cliff Avenue. Currently, it's 55. We're looking to drop it down to 45. Reasoning for this is we, here the last couple of weeks, we've done some, we had some traffic counts completed up there, and some of these sections, we are a ways over, so in our 2045, or our 2018, 19, when we had the master transportation, master transportation plan done, they had in their future counts from 2045, and some of those counts on the, on those segments were exceeding those counts already. So a lot of traffic going on up there. So typically, I, I always preach about the 85 percentile, and a lot of these are, they're, they're between 50 and 55. But I would, I would look at also the, the median speed of everybody, and most of them are in the lower, in the upper 40s. But again, I guess my justification to do it be for the safety of the traveling public. I mean, we're talking 9,000 plus a day.
My mom was, my mom and stepdad were just rear-ended about a month ago, turning into the garden center there, so I'm going to be supporting this. Anybody have any questions for Terry? Go ahead.
When will that latest study be done that's being done on 106?
That corridor study?
Yes.
I believe we have our first kickoff meeting, I think it's later this month is when we started. So, but I, I believe that they've had counters out. I think they've already started that part of it.
But is that a projected to be done in a year?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
I would assume we may have something like a draft copy of it, you know, maybe mid, maybe January-ish, February, March, you know, but the final will probably come out in about a year.
All right, thank you.
So.
Can I get a motion to declare the speed reduction to 45 as, as described by Terry, from Tall Grass over to Cliff Avenue?
Yeah, so I have, we have a resolution. It's in, it's in the, it's in the packet. Sean, do you want to read that on those segments?
Thank you.
To reduce the speed limit from 55 mile per hour to 45 mile per hour on the following segments of Lincoln County 106, or also known as 271st Street, from Tall Grass Avenue to Louise Avenue, from Louise Avenue to Western Avenue, from Western Avenue to Minnesota Avenue, from Minnesota Avenue to Cliff Avenue.
Thank you. Heard the request. Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'll move.
I would still move, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'm going to take your first, Schmidt.
I'll second that.
I'm going to take Commissioner Aaron's second.
And I'll make the following comment, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
When Commissioner Gibbon and I toured Landscape Lawn and Garden Center, Eric Helen, the owner, gave us tour, and he made a request at that time to have the speed limit reduced as well. And now, hearing that your parents were involved in an accident there is also troubling. And so, and I, I don't think they're probably the only people that have either had an accident or a near miss. I don't know what the accident crash rating is for that area. I will just say this, Eric Helen, who has his business there and located there, just opened up this last year, specifically asked for this, asked for a speed limit reduction, and he's there every day, so he must be seeing something to, to make him want to have that request, in addition to probably just wanting people to be able to peacefully and safely enter into the premises. So that's why I'll be supporting it.
I had spoken to him as well, just right before they opened, and your, his comments to me were that that was definitely something that we needed to look at as well. So I've got a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the question, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries?
Thank you.
Sheriff, you want to come on up? Got a reclassification request?
Okay. It says your name right there. I got it. So HR was doing this stuff before.
Oh.
What we're asking for is, we currently have two patrol sergeants that manage the operations in the field. We have three shifts, and it's, it's, we've grown to the point where we need a third field supervisor to take some of the, give us a third shift sergeant and also take some of the responsibilities off the current sergeants taking phone calls at home. And, and honestly, they're doing it probably seven days a week. So without, with three shifts, we need three, three field sergeants. This, this isn't a request for an additional person. This, we would use, and the, the field sergeants work the road just like our, our deputies, they just have the capabilities to supervise, schedule, monitor pursuits, give good advice at crash scenes, stuff like that. It just, it's just a link in the chain that would, that we've grown, grown to the point where we need a third supervisor in the field for the third, for our third shift.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Sheriff Swanson?
And, and we just did this in the jail, and I think that the increased cost annually is about $6,000.
Okay, thank you. No questions? If not, consider a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. And then we've got your law enforcement contract with Harrisburg.
And there was a confusion. That's what I thought I was coming up here for. The Harrisburg, the city, city council signed the contract last week to increase it. Again, I'm giving you rough numbers with no change, but it was 428,000 to 900,018, or 900,014. I think this is really good for the county financially as well as the city of Harrisburg. I think, I think we're finally to the point where the contract's right, and the, the contract requires my signature, the chair's signature, and the auditor's signature, so I'm requesting approval for that.
Thank you. Heard the request. Is there a motion?
That's over.
Got a motion by Aaron's, a second by Poppins. Sean, will you call the roll?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
When, when will it come to a point where they will need their own police staff, their own police department? I mean, are you going to tell them that, or are they going to tell us that? I mean, with their growth, aren't they going to need their own police force and, and hired by their municipality?
Right. And, and there's two ways you can look at this, like Las Vegas is county law enforcement, it's county-wide. So it's not about the, it's not about the size, it's just fairly compensated for the coverage. I think as long as we keep the contract where it's fair and comparable with, with other cities of like size, that, that this is a good deal for Lincoln County. We, we use the Harrisburg space that they give us, that's where the deputies stationed out of. It's, it's a great location for us to be, to cover the busiest part of the county. So there's a lot of benefits to this. So as long as the contract is fair, which I think, I think this new contract is as fair as it's ever been, it's a three-year contract, and it's, it can be reconsidered at any time with 12 months' notice, but...
But the dollar amount's the same for all three years?
No, there's a 3% increase annually.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We will move on to item seven on our agenda, a Westlaw contract.
This is for a few of the books that we have in the office, use prosecutor manuals and a code set.
The code books and, yeah, okay. Consider a motion?
So move.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Item 8, transfer hanger.
This is a transfer of a hanger from one owner, or the lease from one owner to another. The hanger is being sold from one party to a second party.
Heard the request, is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We have a first reading?
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as east half, north half of the subdivision of north half, except lots H1 and H4, Section 6, Township 99 North, right 50 West, La Valley Township from the C Commercial District to the PD Plan Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval 6 to 0.
Thank you. Item 10 on our agenda?
Is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Olson's Track 1, except lots H and H2, northeast quarter of northwest quarter, Section 19, Township 98 North, right 50 West, Lynn Township from the C Commercial District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval 6 to 0.
Thank you, Sean. We'll move on to item 11 on our agenda. Sherry, are you gonna handle that?
There are no significant changes in that contract with the.
Move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Landy?
Yes. And we'll have our budget discussions. Who's coming up, Sherry?
So while Human Resources is supposed to, Susan's here. Susan, go ahead, she is on 14.
Okay. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. No changes from last year. It is possible that the state supplement might be higher than what's listed on page 14, so that's a good thing. But otherwise.
I was just gonna say that, it's not a bad thing.
No.
Alright.
I was just trying to get verification of that, and I haven't received that yet. But it's either gonna be that, or it will be higher.
Sure. Anybody have any questions for Susan?
Susan, what percentage are you now work here in this county?
Oh, full-time.
You're full-time now?
Yep. Since, since the beginning of the year.
It's kind of difficult to keep track from year to year.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Okay, so, don't know where Hannah is, she was today. I can stop while they're on. Okay. Jake's here, and I've got John Moll, that's supposed to be here.
Hey. I see Jake. Good morning, Jake.
It was dead just.
Do you know what page that's on, Sherry?
Jake is on page 18. Our IT is on page 18.
What page again?
Page 18.
Thank you.
Morning, Jake.
Morning. How's everybody? Okay. I didn't have much of an increase this year. That is just due to the fact that we had a major project this year, and we're kind of stuck in a cycle of major projects for the next couple of years. But there are a couple of topics I wanted to bring up before I kind of go over my budget, are concerns that I have with my budget. One is, we're still experiencing issues with things getting shipped at correct times, and that throws off my budget cycle exponentially. We have equipment that we ordered back in June of last year, and we still have not received it. And that's kind of the cycle of everything, how we're going. Servers, phones, everything that we have, I could get up to, I could, I could get a phone in one week, I can get a phone in a year. So it's just certain things like that that I'm gonna experience for a while, I'm assuming. So please be wary of that. Another topic that we have that's a big issue here is our storage utilization. As we grow larger and larger, our storage to hold videos for patrol and for the state's attorney's office to proceed with cases with those videos is growing at an alarming rate. Being able to house that video, and then also make sure it's backed up, has come to a big issue where we're running out of storage almost every single year. This year, I think we have enough budget to cover for the next year, but the year after that, it's gonna be an issue. So I kind of want to get an idea of a plan of something large scale, so that we're not constantly always just trying to catch up. We have something that's in place to handle that situation. That is.
Is that, is that in this budget?
I, in this budget, I have a mandate for the following year. We kind of, we just implemented body-worn cameras to the sheriff's deputies, and we did not know exactly how much video that would cause to increase, and it's increased exponentially. So that was a concern on there. And then I do have another topic that I'd like to discuss. I know there's ARPA funds, and for cybersecurity, that we could potentially get into. I don't know how much money is left, but it's been a discussion on all my forums for that, where we could take some of that money, if you would allow it, of network upgrades for this building. I did get a quote back on that, and it was going to be about $200,000 to $300,000 to upgrade the equipment here. That is going to be end of life within the next year. And that is also not my budget.
And that's not in here either?
That's not in here either. We, when I budgeted for the network upgrade, I did it as a three-year phase. So every year, we did like a small chunk, we did this floor, this floor, and, or upgraded the wifi and things like that. But if there are funds available that you would allow or approve for the IT department to use for cybersecurity, to update the security for the networking, it would be greatly appreciated, and then we could get that just completely done all at once.
What are the thoughts of the board? Do we want to put some money in, so we can get these upgrades done? Or thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I didn't know.
I think it'll be taken under consideration at this point. I would like to say there's enough money to do all the projects. Definitely cybersecurity is not one that we want to slack on.
Yeah.
It would be nice, though, that if our computers could work, that would be awesome. I won't say whose computer, two weeks in a row hasn't worked, but.
The, yeah, other than that, I didn't have too much of an increase. It's just kind of covering other projects and things that just need to be upgraded through the year.
Alright, anybody have any questions for Jake?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
For his talking about cybersecurity between $200,000 and $300,000, what would be wrong if we included 50% of that, or $150,000 this year? Which would certainly lessen the impact on a year from now, rather than waiting to absorb the entire cost.
What are your thoughts on that, Jake?
We do need some major upgrades to our wifi system, so if you're willing to even give some funding for that, that'd be great. I just didn't know if there was an expiration date on those fundings, and if we had some, or I didn't know if they're already allocated to something else, I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, do you want to talk to Sherry about those dates and deadlines?
Yeah, we'll go over all that.
Madam Chair, final question. Given the fact that we're contemplating the needs for courtroom, which may be an additional location, possibly a jail, and other offices, would that impact any thought as to what you would do into this building for the next year or two until that discussion is, I think, maybe not finalized, but maybe has a better, clearer direction?
Yeah, the problem I had is I've been trying to be a little bit conservative on the upgrades here in the building, just in the fact that in case a building did happen, you know, can the equipment move from here to there? Do we need to spend the money here to upgrade the courtroom systems in there, if the courtrooms are going somewhere else and things like that? But I've just come to the realization, we just need to get it upgraded, and then we can move it wherever we need to go.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Hannah, you want to come up? Are you gonna sit back there?
I'll just sit back here.
Okay.
What page? What page?
19.
19.
So, good morning, everyone. So on the budget, the only thing that's like huge, kind of went up, is gonna be our wellness.
I don't know, is she coming?
I don't think you're working.
I don't think that's working either.
Nope. Oh, technology.
You want to just come up to the podium, Hannah?
Yeah, we'll need you up there.
Oh, yeah, you're right here.
We'll make it easy.
Good morning.
Morning. So looking at last year, the only thing that kind of went up is our wellness, because we said to elect it for all employees, not just employees that have health insurance. So that's the kind of, the impetus behind that. Professional fees, we just added in this year, this is all of our recruitment for Lincoln County. So this is a new line that was added in, so. Those are kind of our biggest, I want to say, that went up since last year.
Anybody have any questions for Hannah? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Buildings and grounds is on page 11.
Morning, John.
Good morning, Commissioners. Well, as you know, my budget can be as clear as mud sometimes, so.
If it rains.
Basically, what I'm giving you is managing the facilities as we currently have them, and as you know, we are in discussion about possibly adding, and obviously that will modify my budget, if we rent any facilities or whatnot, pending how we do the cleaning and everything there. So to start out with insurance, I've got that listed as $4,200, that's insuring all my equipment and vehicles, as what I currently have. The next items, professional fees, repairs and maintenance, supplies and materials, basically, I've, I went with a three-year average on those, and then modified it to have a little bit of inflation, to come up with those numbers. Travel and conference, then I have listed, I, I'm required to go to the safety conference, and there's some additional travel and stuff involved in that, depending where it's at. So that's where that $600 comes from. Training, I have $400, that's pretty much with the annual pesticide recertification and some potential supervisor training that we're looking at doing. Utilities, once again, that's a challenging number right now, with the price of gas going up. I, I think I've got a good number for what the three-year average has been with additional inflation coming out, so I believe that's a pretty close number. So that leads us down to category 432, which is buildings and structures. That's $76,000, I basically put back in all the items that you guys cut out last year. So that would be the following items, that's updating the mechanical engineering plans, basically trying to get my, my plans up to date for all the modifications we've made, working with a mechanical engineer to do that. That was $7,000. The stairwell painting project, $16,000. I went back to consider the idea of putting the heating and the off-site storage, I know that wasn't a popular subject, but I wanted at least throw it out there again this year. That's $8,000. And then, I think probably the most critical thing on the deal is, I have $45,000 to demolish the abated property at 47010 by the airport. It's the house, that's that house by the airport, that has been kind of, the roof is pretty much blown off, and, and we can legally now tear it down. $45,000 is a off-the-cuff number that I've talked to a couple contractors, but I think if we do it like in January, we can get it done a lot cheaper. But I went with the maximum number, just with what a couple contractors were telling me.
Sure. Do, so if we have our storage issues with the court stuff downstairs, does that come out of Building and Grounds, or? Have you, where's that at? Have you guys looked at, have you looked at storage options, or scanning and destroying options?
We, we started looking at potential areas to lease, or, or possibly purchase, but we're just really in the early stages of that.
Okay.
I don't know how much detail you want to go in on that yet.
Commissioner, Commissioner Poppins?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I visited with the judge, her honor, and John a little bit about this. Given that facility locations are few and far between, that are going to meet some of the expectations that I think that they'll have, what the leading contenders do electronic scanning, have no idea what that number is yet, but is probably the leading contender of how to handle this issue. So, but it's more to come as, as we get in contact with the agencies that do those services as to what that expenditure may be. But we definitely have a problem, and it needs to get rectified. We've had multiple incidences now where we've damaged, and now have damaged records that cannot be thrown away, and we need to, for once and for all, get this issue figured out, so.
Thank you.
With, with probably at least half of the basement storage is state clerk of courts type storage, then you bring in, you know, who pays that? Does the state pay that, or does the county pay that? You know, there's a lot of moving parts to all that. And then, you know, and talking to them, some, there's some discussion on what really can be scanned and kept as electronic copy, and what really has to be kept as a physical copy, and there's, you know, all those files are kind of intermixed with a little bit of both, you know?
Alright, thank you.
So anyway, that's where I came up with the $76,000 for buildings and structures.
Anybody have any questions for John?
John, do you have a copy of the spreadsheet that you ran your numbers through, that I could have?
I do.
That's a light smile of, please get that to me yesterday.
So, so then I have improvements other than, do you want me to go through the list on that too, then, or, you know?
Go ahead.
I, basically, I put the Veterans Memorial site in again, because it had been discussed, whether we fund it. Remember, I have to put it in my budget, if we have money come in from the public or whatever, it still has to be in my budget, and then it gets paid for, and another means, but it still has to be listed as a budget item to me. So I listed that $25,000 again, whether we have any movement to do it or not, I don't Then, then we, the next two items I have, I have $15,000 to replace the sidewalk out in the front. Basically, from the steps project that I did last year, moving up to the front door, the sidewalk has moved a lot over the last few years. It's been lifted twice, and we still have some elevation issues and movement and the freezing, and we, and it's kind of become quite the hazard. Part of that is the next item, and that's putting an additional handrail all the way up from the handicap ramp leading towards the south. Then it would tie into the existing handrail that we have. And basically, it's just, we, we have definitely gotten to have a lot of wheelchairs coming into the courthouse, people with walkers, and it's, it can be quite hard to do it without him and a handrail. So I feel like it's, I know it meets ADA qualifications as it is, but I feel like it would be really a good move for us to improve it to the next level. And that's why I put those, and the sidewalks themselves, I just think, we just need to make a change. We need to make it better, so. So yes, that's $15,000 and $12,000 with both of those projects combined. So total for my improvements other than would be $52,000. And then furniture, minor equipment, I, I left it at $5,000. And that would be my total government buildings budget.
Thank you.
The egg building is on page 37.
Thanks, Sherry. Thanks, Sherry.
So, first thing on the list for that is fees and contracts. I've got $10,000 listed, just because I still anticipate potential needs to have engineering help as we move forward with additional buildings. Next is rentals. I basically anticipate it to be the same as last year, so $5,000. Repairs and maintenance, same as last year, $25,000. Supplies and materials, I'm projected off of inflation again to go up a little bit, so I'm bringing that up to $30,000. Utilities, again, based off of the three-year, well, I guess the two-year history that we have now, and forecasted inflation with the new building, so up to $20,000. The land purchase is still the same as it has been, the 89, 640. And then I got...
How many years do we have on that?
What's that?
How many more years do we have on that?
I feel like this should be last year, but I don't know.
I think it may be this year or next year. I'll have to double check.
Yeah, I think...
There's a total of five years.
So then, that moves us into buildings and structures. I list the interest off of the loan at 360, as always, $360. And then I have written in $240,000 for the building of two buildings, and of course, once again, that would be supplemented through the foundation if they raised those monies. So that's paid for in other means. I've got $5,000 listed, because we're looking at pulling the carpet off the walls to make the building, the existing building, more aesthetically pleasant, and I think it'd be a fire safety thing. But by doing that, I would have to add some acoustical tiles to prevent echoes in that when we have our meetings in there. So I estimate about $5,000 to do that. I'd like to consider putting in a building maintenance storage shed back to the north side of the building for about $20,000. Basically, we're at the point, we've got so much stuff that we've got to start storing, and we could use the forklift over there, but we don't have a place to keep the forklift where it's not in the way when we have meetings going on and other functions. So we just kind of, we just need to have our own little storage building. With a total then of $265,360.
And John, I'll need the spreadsheet on this, because I don't have any of the revenue that you're accounting for under the expenditures that you've got on this.
Okay.
Because if you're saying that the leaders are going to put money into it, then I need to put that on the revenue side.
Okay. I can work with you on that.
Hi, Dave.
Anybody have any questions for John? Guess not.
All right. Good. All right, thank you.
John, are we doing stone removal at the airport yet?
Yes, we are. We, it's mostly done between myself and John Hanson and a part-time staff.
Anything else we're doing out there, under your budget?
The, right now, the labor part is coming out of my budget for the mowing also.
Do we need an executive session for anything?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'll do with the budget sheets is I will put on all the new changes. I will get them sent out to you again. I will have them printed for you for next week, so if you want to leave your binders here, I'll get those updated in the binders for you for next week. Should have all the information, since the major changes, I think, have been completed now, and we'll see where we're at.
All right, thanks. Consider, we don't need exec, then I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One suggestion I would make, having listened to this meeting, I would think we should take a look at our audio, because I would mention about, oh, a good 30% of the time, you were inaudible. Maybe, and maybe that was by design.
Was it just me, or was it everybody?
No. Commissioner Aaron's was the worst. You couldn't understand. He broke in and out continually. So, anyway, that's just a thought.
All right, thank you.
Good meeting.
Commissioner, are you seconding the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.